Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board meeting for Thursday, September 28th, 2023. Time is now 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda, A and R's 502 Southwest Main Street. Does anyone here on behalf of that application? Mr. Benoit, any comments or questions regarding this?
I do not. This is a simple transfer of land between two parties. Both signed the application. There was a couple minor updates that they put on the plan. There was only five signature lines. We had it to seven board members. And just labeling the road appropriately. That was it.
Okay. Would you like to say anything? Okay, all right. I'm bored. Any questions or comments regarding this A and R? I entertain a motion to endorse.
So moved, second.
502 Southwest Main Street. Mr. Zwicker, I mean the motion. Mr. Schultzberg, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearings, Douglas Planning Board fee schedule amendments. Did we open that hearing?
Uh, no, it's a new one.
Okay. In accordance with Master in Law, Chapter 41, Section 81Q, and Master in Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, the Town of Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 28th, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass, to consider amending the Planning Board regulations governing fees, schedules for all permitting applications, advertisement, and abutter mailings. A copy of the proposed fee schedule and regulations may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. Okay, very good. We're open. Entertained motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg, seconded by Mr. Preston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Benoit?
Oh, I'm the applicant, that's right.
What you have for our presentation?
All of board members. Matthew Benoit, Community Development Director for Town of Douglas. We have before you is a draft fee schedule, Douglas Planning Board. It's just some red line strike-throughs and some red line additions to the document. In summary, what's happening here is we're trying to create a legal advertising fee, which we have discussed previously. The ads have been the responsibility of the applicants. They've been submitting a check, then we go to the telegram. Telegram gives us a price. We have to give them their check back and then ask for another check. But it just, it gets convoluted. So what we're doing instead is we're setting a flat fee, advertising fee $200, and which is consistent with what the ZBA is doing as well. The other thing is the abutter notifications. We have been absorbing those fees ourselves, especially for certified letters, and those rates continue to climb. We had gone back and forth at a previous meeting and discussion, talking about what number to put on that. But I think, and Jen Kuchar came up with this in the office, was just to put the language in there to read on page two of eight, based on the current USPS certified receipt mailing rates. And then for abutters' decision, based on the current USPS mailing rates. Those don't go out certified. There's some other minor grammatical changes in here. And then the other thing we eliminated was the Master in Law, Chapter 44, 53E and a half accounts. That's still in there, but it's an archaic form of doing this. We don't have a town engineer anymore. The 53E and a half, the purpose of that is to put funds in by an applicant for the in-house engineer to perform review services. And since we don't have that anymore, everything's going out through 53G. There's no reason for us to have it in the fee schedule anymore. So that is being proposed to be removed as well. Aside from some other renumberings and minor grammatical changes, that's all we have before us this evening. It's just required us to hold a public hearing to make these changes.
Great.
Very good.
Board, any questions or comments regarding the changes?
Question?
Yeah?
What was that? One fee?
For advertising?
For everything?
Yeah, it's, um, each applicant has to put an ad in the paper, right?
But didn't we said it, didn't you set a one's price rather than the overall?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred?
Yep. The ads are usually right in and around that number. So that's the number we decided.
Good to me.
Question? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments regarding this public hearing? Anyone online have any questions or comments? Is there anyone online?
I don't think so.
Participants, one?
Number two.
Okay.
That's just us.
All right. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Socrate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and?
We're looking to endorse this to the selectmen for town meeting, or this just for us?
To accept the?
The new fee structure?
As amended, yeah. As presented.
Make a motion to accept the new fee structure as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Socrate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item is over though. Ahead of time, Mr. Benoit, do you want to?
Uh, we do have Mr. Manrick here.
Okay.
I'll take him.
Yeah, of course. Mr. Manrick?
Good evening, Board. I'm Manrick, Development.
What do you have for us tonight? Yes, I'm ready.
A simple request, extended hours for Clayco, the warehouse developer. On Sunday, they'd like to work to 5:00 o'clock, roofers only. You've previously granted extended hours to the structural steel people. They're done. This is for roofers only.
And what are the current allowed hours?
I believe Sunday is, it's just Sunday only. The normal hours during the week and Saturday. Just Sunday, they want the extended hours. So I think it's, ends at 3:00 now, going to 5:00.
Okay.
It'll be docked after that, and you don't want to be on a 53-foot high roof after dock.
And what's the period of time?
Till October 31st.
I think they'll have a covered, they'll have a deck.
Well, yeah, before that. They're just planning a few rainy days.
Yep.
Like we haven't gotten any rain.
Board, any questions, concerns regarding the request for extended hours?
I have no problem with that. They're trying to get it wrapped up before snow flies and with the rain.
Okay.
We're trying to close the roof in with the, every rain, it just?
Mix it, yeah.
The gravel inside just gets wet and they can't move on.
Has there been any complaints with what's been going on so far? Everything is quiet? Nobody can hear anything?
Apart from, we had some erosion concerns that were addressed by, by the developers, Madam Chair, and apart from those, the abutters haven't raised any concerns to us.
So whether the abutters haven't raised any issues with what's going on, I understand, trying to get the roof on it. I have no problem with it. Granting it till 5:00 PM on Sundays?
Yep.
Until October 31st.
Granting the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Preston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have our potential alternate associate planning board member here. If he'd like to speak with him, perhaps?
Okay.
He's going to introduce himself and tell us a little about himself while he's here.
Okay, all right. Come to the table, please. Let me just take a peek.
Madam Chair, we did receive an application. We do have one vacancy for an additional associate member.
Okay.
I'll introduce Mike DeRose.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Say any more about yourselves, sir?
Um, well, I've been in Douglas for 25 years now. Moved here because I like the kind of quiet town, small town kind of thing. And I recently retired, so I've decided that, you know, I'm not bored or anything like that, but I can?
Not yet.
Yeah, yeah, once you join the board.
No, actually, my work experience, I'm an engineer, trained engineer, but I solve problems, basically.
Love that.
And I figured, well, why not start exploring how I can help the town? And initially, I was approached and said, hey, we got an opening on the zoning board for an alternate. But I was, wasn't fast enough getting my application. So I said, okay, we'll do this, you know, and I, I've stayed away from town politics most of the time I've lived here, especially because in the early days, it was kind of weird. Things have changed a lot in this town.
Yeah.
So I figured, hey, why not? I know I can help with almost anything that comes up. And I have plenty of time, so why not?
It would be fantastic.
Thank you very much for offering your time.
Are we allowed a third mic?
A third mic? Oh, no.
Is your name Mike?
Yes.
Third Mike, oh God.
Hey, it's a good name.
Good thing I do the last names, though.
Even a middle name.
Yeah, I think by consensus, we can have a favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and we welcome you and your experience. Very impressive, and hope you can make it on board, get your application in before somebody else does.
Yeah. It's in.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Great.
And have your little meet and greet with them. So appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, hopefully we'll see you at the next meeting.
Especially with Ernie's unknown absence length, it's good to have a?
Yeah.
A second, yeah.
I think so, too.
Absolutely.
Be great.
Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice meeting.
And we'll be seeing you around, I hope.
Feel free to stick around for the rest of the agenda.
I'll stick around for a while.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna get a little misunderstanding on the timeframe.
Madam Chair, do you want to make a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen?
Do you want a formal vote?
If you wish.
Okay. I entertain a motion to favorably recommend Mr. DeRose.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a question on that. How long does the alternate, is it a certain amount of term length, or?
I believe it's five years.
Five years?
Yeah. It's the standard the selectmen can decide.
Yeah, just have to re-apply and?
Don't think we're appointed.
Too long?
It's too long.
It's too long. There you go. So is in the elected ones.
Yeah, the five balls off it.
Yeah.
Did anyone review the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Want to do those? We have two minutes. May 25th. Comments?
Yes.
Amendments?
Under number four, we're going to start with Mr. Callahan. Would like to raise the car in the liquor store.
Okay. Raise the car.
I want to raise.
It should be R-A-Z-E.
Raise.
The current?
Garage?
Maybe the current?
Because there is a garage there.
It raises, it's like down the garage in the back.
Garage and liquor store?
R-A-I-Z-E, the garage.
No, it should be just R-A-Z-E.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be R-A-Z-E and the?
Car might be garage. It might be.
Sure.
In liquor store, but?
And?
I'll have to look at that. That's just, I don't know, how to make any sense of that.
It must be garage. Somebody probably just thought it's a car.
I think it's raise the current liquor store.
Okay.
R-A-Z-E.
Not the car in the liquor store.
Right. Oh, which I believe. Okay. Current.
The second line on the second page, delivery tax and traffic.
I have concerns about the increase of deliveries. I think that's just deliveries and traffic. Where is that?
Second line, second page.
Say it again?
Second line, second page.
Second line? Yeah, it should read, it should read increase of deliveries and traffic.
Yes.
And the third line, Mr. Benoit suggested that there was a concern raised about the lighting and the hours of security lighting and light signage.
And the hours. I see. Got it. Okay.
Number seven, it starts with 7:56 PM. Do we care about capitalization? The Board of Selectmen should probably be?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
And then on the second line, to not exercise the right of first refusal.
Got it.
And then the only other one I had was item number nine, it should be mended, the select board should be capitalized also.
Right. Got it.
Now, the first paragraph, about halfway down.
What number?
Second page, first paragraph. It was discussion, but there was discussion.
Got it, there was.
I have two little ones as well. I'm back to the first page. Second line from the bottom, last, second sentence from the last, that reads, he expects to have the revised plan in, in, just repeats itself. Strike one of those. And then my last item is number eight on the second side, second sentence down, talks about what is called the R factor, or it's irregularity factor, not regularity. So I correct that.
Sounds good. Entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 25th as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Schlesman, seconded by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, time is now 7:17. Public hearing, Pine, Sand &amp; Stone, application for earth removal permit, site plan review and special permit, 93 Cliff Street. Name of applicant, Pine, Sand &amp; Stone Inc. Name of owner, Bouffre Properties LLC, Palsy Hill Realty LLC. Date and time of public hearing, Thursday, September 28th, 7:15 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting an earth removal permit from the Douglas Planning Board pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, section 6.1 and 9.3, and is requesting a site plan review under section 9.4, and is requesting a special permit for outdoor manufacturing and processing. Project consists of constructing a new material processing and rock crushing facility. Project site and location, 93 Cliff Street. Assessors map, 106, parcels 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 9.1 and 9.2. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room 29 Depot Street. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit douglas-ma.gov for agenda and Zoom information. Copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass. Okay, welcome.
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. Since we are taking three separate hearings at once, I just think either a statement from the chair or a formal opening, just to that effect, for the folks and the abutters, just saying we're either going to have them all three at once for opening and closure, or have the board motion.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearings for 93 Cliff Street under the earth removal permit, site plan review, and special permit for outdoor manufacturing and processing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg, seconded by Mr. Preston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So?
Hey, everybody. Good evening. Andy Leonard from Pine, Sand. So I think everybody's aware of the potential development at the Pine, Sand properties and the abutters. So with that event taking place, we've searched for a property where we could keep in business and keep all 35 people employed. So we worked with Ron Anger and Fran Bouffre on this property, and this attracted us, the industrial property along with the buildings that are ready to move in, because we'd have a short time to get off of our property if that project is approved. So that's why we're here tonight, and I'll turn it over to David Feist from CMG to explain what we're proposing.
Good evening. My name is David Feist. I'm a project civil engineer with CMG. We're located in Sturbridge, Mass. Again, we started a few months back looking at this property. Tonight, Andy Leonard is here along with Maury Bristol from Pine, Sand &amp; Stone. Do you have any operational actions? There's basically eight separate parcels located in the northwest corner of the town, right on the border to Oxford Town Lines here, and the Webster Town Line is there. Basically, as Cliff Street is a short section here, we have Sutton Road on the Webster side, and Joe Jenny Road on the Oxford side. With that currently on the property, Fran Bouffre owns six of the properties in the lower half, which is currently permitted for a scrap recycling facility. It's an industrial zone. It's surrounded in Douglas on both sides by industrial zones. There's a residential zone to the north in Oxford, and then there's a conservation district zone on the opposite side over here in Webster. And then on the other quarter, not directly abutting, but there's a residential zone as well on the, just the northern corner here in Webster. So the majority of the site is surrounded by industrial in Douglas, and all eight of the properties are zoned industrial. The scrap recycling facility, I know, was, I think, permitted about back in 2014, 2015. The site is fully designed, has an access road from Cliff Street that comes in. There are three existing industrial buildings. The large building in the rear here is, you know, is nice, because you could actually, I think, we can tip up a full-size, you know, 18-wheeler dump truck in there, as well as, you know, plenty of room for maintenance and other sorts of that type of stuff. There's two truck scales on the property already, so it's really set up for the type of use of Pine, Sand &amp; Stone is proposed. The rear of the site, there's some cleared area in the back. The drainage for the site stormwater was designed as a land use, high potential flooding load for the scrap recycling facility already with existing detention basins here, and also down in this area with a series of four bays and other onsite stormwater infrastructure that was put in back in around 2015. The two properties to the north, owned by the Angers, there's a small industrial building with a separate access from Joe Jenny Road, that these two properties are going to remain pretty much as is, to act as sort of a buffer. And I believe the angle will be renting for at least a year, I believe, you know, as the project moves forward. So this part of the project will stay as is. We had Ecotec reflag the wetlands as part of the property, and then had existing grade, local landscape company from Douglas survey the property and provide the existing conditions mapping, you know, to evaluate the project. We also went out, because we have the earth removal permit, we did a series of soil test pits on the property, as well as five bedrock soil borings located throughout the property, just to get an idea, because we can only, from a number, two things we're looking for is the type of soils, depth of bedrock, depth of groundwater, and also to try to determine, you know, how the, where the, how the rock would work here. We could only excavate down to within 10 feet of that high groundwater in the property. With that, we drilled down, bedrock is pretty consistent. It's only about two feet down on the property, which on most projects, you know, is not a good thing. This particular use, it's actually a good thing, because we're planning to use it for, you know, to mine the rock, for crush rock and process it over the years. With that, CMG's environmental division went out, monitoring groundwater. And we have in the back part of the property where it comes uphill, probably about 30 feet to groundwater, and we have those measurements were all on the plans. So I'd be happy, is there any questions regarding the existing conditions before I go over the proposed issues?
No. Board, existing conditions? No questions?
Just a two thing. Is Bouffre on it, or does Marty Lindis still own it?
Bouffre owns it.
Bouffre bought it from Marty, from Franny, back when this was in front of the board. I wasn't sure if it was leased, or if he bought it.
Fran owns it.
He bought it, okay. That's all I wanted.
I have just one question. How's the stormwater system holding up currently?
Actually, very well. Again, a lot of the basins actually don't even appear like they've seen the water. They're well vegetated and in really very good shape from what we see, so, based on our observations. And it's interesting, because the site is mapped to C and D soils with the depth of shallow rock. But again, you know, rock can be a little funny with fractures and such. So even during some of the heavier rains, there wasn't a lot of water in the stormwater bases when we were out there during just our initial detentions.
Great, thank you.
So our proposed project, the, you know, the existing industrial part of the project will pretty much stay as is. The buildings and the scales on the entrance road will still be able to be used by Pine, Sand &amp; Stone. We're actually proposing to disturb just about 24 acres in total for the project. There'll be sort of two separate parts to it. There'll be our upper yard, which is approximately 16 acres or so, and that will be very soon. We'll have the crushing tower with the sorting and different stone processing in the front portion. There'll be a drop pond with some sediment basins, which will be tied to the wash plant. And again, there'll be sort of a recycling system in place so that they'll, you know, the draw from the drop pond, as well as take from an onsite well for the washing of the material. The rest of the project, this sort of shows a full build-out, which will take a number of years, probably, I don't, maybe 10 to 20 years is sort of projected, how long it'll take to sort of expand to what you see on the plan here. To start with, the front area with just the equipment will be placed in the front. Will be an access road, tying off the existing access road. All the site stormwater will come down, and we're going to have a new stormwater basin, because this particular use, in addition, falls under the multi-sector general permit under EPA's stormwater as well. So there'll be some additional stormwater monitoring, as well as stormwater pollution prevention, planning measures that will be in place for this project, just in addition to the standard Massachusetts stormwater requirements. With that, we've sized an additional stormwater basin here to take the upper yard, and that will flow into the existing stormwater system. And now, it's been designed to control the sediment and all that. I know Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering is currently peer reviewing our stormwater design, and I'm sure he'll have that within a few weeks for the board. The lower part of the project will be a little different. You'll see it's separated into sort of two areas. The lower eight acres is proposed as what's sort of called an ABC recycling facility, which would be asphalt, brick, and concrete materials. Through the Mass DEP, there's again a separate permit process for that as well. It's the RCC permitting process. We're currently, you know, working with Pine, Sand &amp; Stone to prepare those applications. It has sort of just a separate area for sorting those materials, as well as a separate stormwater system with another sediment basin, which will flow through a series of existing sediment basins to an infiltration basin prior to discharge to the wetlands. With this, we've also made an effort to keep all of the new development outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. We had a development review meeting this week with the town, and I think it suggested we also file an RDA with Conservation Commission as part of the permitting process. It's not going to be forthcoming as well. With that, I guess I can be happy, Andy's here to answer any operational questions. Are there any questions you might have on the design?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Benoit, anything to add right now?
Sure. Just echo some of the tech review comments.
Okay.
If I may. We'll talk to tech review, yeah, that, that did come up about conservation. It looks like the limits are going to be outside the 100-foot buffers. I just thought, for filing purposes, come into the conservation for some form of filing.
You can't hear you.
Oh.
You can't hear him, so you have to speak louder.
Okay. I will speak louder, sorry.
Thank you.
Conservation, I just wanted them to file something, and at least check with the commission to see if there's any sort of jurisdictional, just looking at the plan. I think it's important they at least come to the board for an RDA, determine whether or not CONCOM needs to go any further. That was one of my comments. The fire department asked that a Knox box access be put out front, which they were amenable to. I mentioned that if there's stockpiles on the edges of this, but on the edge of the buffer zones, that they are protected, prevention from discharge into the wetlands. Engineer talked about the DEP permit. It'll be provided to the local board, yeah. So the other question I raised was something I'm going to ask this board is whether or not we feel the traffic study is necessary. So those are the long and short of the comments from tech review. So those are the long and short of the comments from tech review. But I'm personally more interested in the board's comments and comments from Neil Butters at this time.
All right. Thank you. Ford, questions?
I do have a number of questions. Has, have you done a layout like this in a residential area? I know it's zoned industrial, but there are a lot of homes on that street. And where your current operation is, there really aren't many homes right there. So what will the impact from noise and just general, you know, the way people are living today and the way they will be living once this passage gets?
As far as the noise, we could answer that shortly. We're doing, currently doing a noise analysis at Pine Sand for DEP and we'll have the results. I think they were there today.
Sorry. Marty Bristol, Pine, Sand and Stone. That's part of the DEP process. We do have to go and have, what do you call it? Yeah, sound monitoring. There's some sound monitoring protocol that we have to go through. So they'll recognize, you know, they'll go out, you know, basically, and they'll take a week's worth of data. You know, they'll listen for a week and come back with some algorithm to kind of show us what the rules will be out in this particular area. So.
If the way it is currently, or?
Well, they compare what it is now to what potential levels will be and what's our output. So they'll dictate what we, you know, can and can't do from that, from that aspect.
We have to stay within...
A range.
A range.
Decibel range.
dB range.
This is very similar to, well, it's the same as what McIntyre went through on Davis Street. So, fortunately, we're currently doing a noise study for the state at Pine, which we could apply to then.
And then the hours of operation, the material processing, you're asking for approval for a twenty-four hour operation. What would that?
Only, and the only reason for that is occasionally the town, like the town of Douglas or a town needs something in a snowstorm, and not, we don't want to work. I was going to joke that it's hard to get our guys to work eight hours. I'm only kidding. But no one wants to work twenty-four seven. It's only for emergencies, storms or...
Water leaks.
Water leaks or something like that.
So that would be conditioned. That would be conditioned.
That's all I have right now.
So could we have a baseline of your hours of operation for the guys that barely work eight hours? So can we have a baseline, whether it's seven AM or it's?
So we generally work, generally work seven to four. The guys come in a lot of times at six. And if there's a job going on, we might work till, you know, occasionally till seven. Generally, we'll work on a Saturday till three, or at least noon. The guys like the hours.
The, I know it's come up in the past, the idling. And it depends on, of course, DEP and noise regulation.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, if there's, I can't fathom what we have for woods here and buffer and distances. It hasn't all been marked out where the houses are. Like to see, you know, the woods and, you know, some sort of mapping and...
I think it would be great if the planning board...
It would be helpful.
Yeah, wanted to go up to the property. The spread of the property is pretty far removed.
Through, through GPS and mapping, and we could see that. I mean, it'd be good for, because...
Yeah. We'd be happy to take a tour with everybody.
Well, we don't, just, I'm saying, at least see from a sky view. You know, what the vegetation is, and it isn't just an open field, you know, like what's the tree scape and such like that.
Mr. Benoit's getting that for you.
Can you get Google out?
Yeah, good.
Yeah, it's hard to get it.
So the hours of operation, normal business hours are listed. So, seven to five, and then Saturday, seven to three.
Uh-huh. Now we see it. That was good.
Hold on, I gotta share it with the Zoom folks.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes. Yeah.
Through the chair, the applicant. It looks like, unless I'm missing something, you're only requesting one waiver. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And the waiver is mostly a landscape waiver. We are actually providing vegetated, it's required as a twenty-foot waiver or a twenty-foot buffer between a residential property. In our particular case, we have over three hundred feet of wooded area on this side here. So it's, and it requires a landscape buffer. We're basically proposing that the existing wooded area is more than adequate than a twenty-foot landscape buffer. And that was the reason for the waiver. In addition, you'll see there's existing wetland and wooded area here as well to give a buffer from the roadway. Again, that's where the waiver comes from. Everything else is a lot was prepared under the regulations and is in place.
And are you applying to Oxford and to Webster for the project?
I guess at this point, we were, we had to, we haven't been contacted by either municipality.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the process, I actually asked them to produce Butters list for both of the communities so they could notify those residents.
Yeah. Because I don't know how we would grant a waiver from property in Oxford. That doesn't seem possible. So as far as our bylaw and the properties in Douglas, there's no waiver needed.
Right. And what another way to look at it may be that we don't need it and one other. We could, if necessary, I guess, worst case, we have three hundred feet. If a twenty-foot landscape buffer is requested, we could build one of the, within that three hundred feet.
What does Oxford's bylaw state for industrial projects abutting residential? Do they have any requirements?
That's, I'm not sure. We can look that up and find out.
Yeah, I don't believe that we can possibly grant a waiver from another town's property. So.
And with that, there's no changes, at least to this existing portion of the industrial property.
Right. Yeah.
If you had a pointer, the building in the northerly, well, I don't know if it's northerly, up there is the building. Up there, right? And then you're saying that three hundred feet is from the line from there, from the residential, down to right there. Keep going, Matt. South of that, yeah. That's the buffer. And then you'll be moving into what looks like the two square, the square to the right down below, and then moving over and doing your ABC into that area to the right of that building.
Building three.
Right. Right. So you'll be, that's all industrial boarded by industrial, those two sides.
Correct.
Okay. So the residential is to the left and above. And there's residential over here.
No, it's actually just...
Just that area there.
Industrial above.
Okay. So we're just trying to say, and that isn't substantially changing that building that's... Sorry, I didn't mean to take your time. But that box there, that building there, isn't changing, the activity isn't changing as part of this application. Just trying to understand, you know. Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
To the applicant. So you're going to be meeting all the other requirements should have that particular waiver. My biggest concern is excavation versus restoration and having too much open area. Because as you know, I'm sure you know all too well, under certain conditions, especially in the summer, these things become a dust bowl that can really affect residents and abutters.
Yeah. So our intent is to put in an irrigation system that covers the whole property.
I will say that Pine probably is one of the more responsible in using due diligence in terms of running your pit, and I appreciate that. I think it should be noted. But you know that happens.
I do.
We had to give you guys a call last summer. It was like something out of the thirties. It was a dust bowl.
Yeah, I do. And just to speak to that, so with the last, the hurricane coming up, so our fear was, when we watched the weather, that it's going to be windy, but it may not rain this far west. So we, two days before, we had, I don't know, six or eight acres, ten acres sprayed to seal it up. So that, and then it rained, so that was a wasted effort. But it was still, we felt the thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you for that, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And are you planning to keep the subdivision as a subdivision or combine?
I'd like to because this, this property, as it stands with the quantities that are projected, probably isn't in the twenty-year range, in the ten-year range. So we, similar to what happened at Pine, we would grade this to complement future development. And Fran had a road approved by the planning board. And probably, I don't know, seventy-five percent constructed. And it is in exact to the plan because we did an ASB build. So personally, I foresee extending that road and providing, if an abutter wants access to their property, they would be able to use that road.
Okay.
So that's, that's my viewpoint.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I can elaborate further on that, if you don't mind. So the subdivision roadway, yeah, it doesn't follow this line that you see. This was a right-of-way that was kind of deeded that way. But the subdivision road actually came here as shown. But then it actually extends a little further to a cul-de-sac that wasn't constructed because the building is there. But, yeah, I see the point, but I just wanted to paint the picture better for the...
So that road actually, if it was, we've overlaid it with drone, the plan, over the existing conditions. And it, Fran put that building that looks like with the number three. The road is actually above that, but it's too close for setbacks. So our thought would be that we would come back and want to do a private way because I'm thinking the town of Douglas doesn't want to go blow out there. Maybe, maybe not. But, and we'd probably have to reconfigure a portion of that road and extend it. But that's for another day.
Okay. And as far as the wetlands on the property, were they reflagged? Was everything reflagged?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I just have a couple of quick ones. I know where you're at now, you always keep your trucks under cover and stuff. You're planning on keeping a garage up there or anything like that?
Yeah. So what attracted us to this property with our potential situation is that first building just below the eight. That's a forty-eight hundred square foot shop.
Okay.
The next building is a ninety-eight hundred square foot shop. And that building number three is an open thirty-two thousand square foot, forty-foot-high building.
Okay. I remember that because that all came before us before, so on that layout.
Fran's currently doing some metal recycling there.
Right.
As an overflow.
And through the chair, so your entrance and exit, it's all going to be on the pre-existing asphalt, everything that's already all there?
Correct.
No more roads are going to be cut? No, nothing?
No.
Through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
One more. I'm just trying to, I'm a visual guy, my background and all. Can you go back to your aerial?
Sure.
Because the letter here that has been introduced by the abutters, I'm very concerned because they say the property is predominantly residentially surrounded. And I want you to tell me where the commercial abutting is and where the residential is. Because this statement, this one line says it's predominantly abutted by residential and managed forest, which I'd like to see where that is too.
This is zoning now.
Yeah. Can you put the layer on?
Yeah, I can do that too.
Okay.
I'm not going to get the other town or anything, but, yeah.
Right.
Entire area. And this is where they're proposing that the whole thing is industrial for...
And that's six, seven, eight.
For quite some ways.
If you pull the whole entire...
That's all industrial?
Yes.
Yeah. The whole part of the town is all industrial.
So the little triangular corner to the left, what is that?
It's also industrial.
Coming, no, 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 coming down in the green, who owns? What's that?
That's a different town.
That's a different town, but what is that land? What use is it?
We own it.
Okay. That's, I want to hear that. But what is?
We'll get to that.
What, what is that zoned in the town? Is that residential? Is it open, you know, conservation land? What is it? Right there? Matt, do you know?
Yeah. If the applicant's representative can answer.
Okay. I'll wait. I'll wait. I just, the line says predominantly, so I didn't want to...
In Webster, there's two zones. South of Sutton Road is zoned Conservation District. Down this side of Sutton Road, to the north in Webster, it's agricultural, single-family residential on the opposite side over here. And there is some industrial within Douglas before you get there. On the northern side here, this is the Oxford-Douglas Town Line. South is industrial, which is a gray area you see on the map. And then to the north in Oxford is zoned residential, single-family residential.
So I just want to make sure that the word predominantly doesn't mean necessarily predominantly. I just try and understand to what degree it's all importance, but just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you so much. Yes. Do you need to add a scale house or a trailer or anything like that? Are you going to be using the?
So there's two scales on the property now?
Yeah. I see one on the plan. I just don't see the other, the second one.
Yeah. So there's, see the scale to the left of the big building?
Yeah. Red.
Yeah. That's a, that's a tractor trailer-sized scale. We would probably enhance, there's a little shed there, probably want to enhance a shed there. And then if you go down to the left, Matt, there's an office on that side of the building. And that's, wouldn't take a tractor trailer, but it'd take a triax.
Okay.
And that has a window that goes in.
And then my other question would be just more procedural. Do we have to do anything to notify Oxford or Webster's planning board or get their inputs? I would just not want to, you know, say, it's not going to happen, but we approve it tonight. This gets put in next week, and then the two towns are knocking on our door asking, where did this come from? Just, is there any notifications or anything that we have to do on that part?
Great question. Best by procedure, we do have to send a letter just as part of a butter notices to each of the surrounding towns. I would advise that the board consider sending an additional letter after the opening of the hearing, notifying them, giving them the date of our next hearing, saying, please provide any comments in advance of that meeting, just to give them a second notice. It might, if the board's amenable.
Yeah, I would prefer the applicant reach out.
Okay.
And do that and have some evidence that there's no comments from the other two towns. And I don't think that we can grant that waiver, so maybe they would be able to weigh in on that. But it's, yeah, the subject town needs to be the one to grant it. So I don't know how they handle that if there's an industrial abutting residential. But the applicant can, I'm sure, find out on that side. Anyone else?
Just one thing.
Yeah.
And I think back from the days of the master plan, that's why this was all set up as industrial?
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
And that's what the town looked at and figured out way back when they wrote the original master plan, was to have this area as an industrial zone for the town of Douglas?
It wasn't as a result of the master plan. It predated that.
It did.
But it was reviewed and sustained, if you will.
Okay.
You had it both on the extremes of town, as it is now, west and east.
And if I can, so that means this line's been industrial for the last thirty?
Since we've had zoning.
So forever?
Yes.
Does that, nobody's ever bothered to buy it or do anything really with it?
Right.
Okay. So this is something where the industrial zone just didn't appear. It's always been there.
There's also an adult entertainment zone up there too, over there.
We're not thinking anything of it.
Okay. No, just want to get that, let that be known, that this has been an industrial area for ever since beginning of zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Zucker. Okay. Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions regarding? Yes. Name an address?
Yes. My name is Attorney David DuPont. I represent the estates of Thomas Smith, who's the personal representative of the estates of Airlea and Everson Smith. They are the direct abutters to this project down where your arrow is now and up around the other side. They're in opposition to this. The family currently uses this as a conservation area. They also use it for hunting and outdoor activities. It's wooded. In my letter, I did state that it's predominantly residential, not in a zoning sense, but in actually what is being used. actually what it's being used for now. Once this larger industrial use comes in, it's going to change, in the opinion of the, those abutters, that it's going to change the complexion of that neighborhood to a detriment from what it is right now.
Okay, yep, we are in receipt of your letter. So did your client want to speak?
Oh, my client isn't able to appear today.
Okay.
But two of the other heirs of the estate are here that are familiar with this, and they do have some questions. I guess, you know, I'll let them speak for themselves, but, you know, there is a concern that the Smith family use of this land is going to have to substantially change, and it will...
What lot numbers we dealing with?
What number?
Yeah, what lot numbers we dealing with?
Oh, it's, we can put the abutters on...
May we come up and show you on the map?
I'm sure.
He owns a ton of property.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
It's everything in blue.
Yeah, so every blue dot.
My dad spent a lifetime picking up parcels of land, so you know a big chunk of this. We surround this entire complex, well, proposed complex, okay? The concern that we have, all right, is if you look at this, okay, all of this is in a wildlife program, it's in the forestry program, it has been natural. You mentioned you moved to town because it's nice and it's quiet, right? How are these people going to understand that when right across the street you've got a rock quarry? Doesn't matter what town, doesn't matter what zoning, the bottom line is you're right across from people's homes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Joe Jenny Road, single lane, one on each way, traffic's going to increase dramatically. You mentioned they're going to do a 20-foot buffer, so does that mean that we get 20-foot? And then that's our line of our property? Today, if you could, can you zoom this down a little bit? Just the other way?
Zoom in, zoom out.
Perfect. Okay? What was there before you was a recycling plant?
If you could speak to me through the chat, that's okay.
What was there was a recycling plant?
Yes.
Okay? The noise that that recycling plant carried went everywhere. You mentioned, Mr. Dupont mentioned in his letter, we hunt.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we hunt, we fish. We go down and fish in our pond, and it's a beautiful trinkle area. Douglas is made for that. And you're sitting there and you hear banging and clanking and beep, 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 as trucks are backing up, and that's nothing compared to a rock quarry. You were asked what your decibel level is.
Sir?
I'm sorry.
I'll give you one more chance. Look right at me.
Okay.
Thank you.
It was mentioned that we don't know the volume of noise that will be created by this.
Yes.
I challenge that response. If you're in the business of rock crushing, you know what the noise levels will be, okay? I'm very surprised there's no residents that live in that area. There's no way, this is a big deal, folks. You're going to put a rock quarry in the middle of a residential area. I don't understand that. We have purposely had this property for six years.
Sixty-plus years.
We've hunted on this 50-some odd years. We have worked hard to maintain this here as natural. And we don't oppose businesses coming in, we don't oppose growth and things like that. But this is a rock quarry. Who, look at the houses across the street, do you know how much noise they're going to make? There's no like white noise from a highway. I'll sit down here by the, by the pond in the fall, the weather's there, the deep, east of mine was beautiful, and you hear bang, bang, bang. That's nothing to what a rock quarry will do. So he comes in and does that, our value of our land drops dramatically, our ability to use it drops dramatically. So I just ask this board, please, think if you lived in one of those houses on whatever town it is, it is going to be so loud.
Right.
I don't understand how this gets to where it is today here.
Well, I think the main issue is it's industrial zoned. So how could, as a board, how could we deny an industrial use? And it's been like that since 1970.
Right.
And no one has, no one has made any moves to change the zoning, to have it be either forested or agricultural zoning. There's been zero requests for zone change. That's, and there's an existing use, there's an existing special permit that was granted 2011. Your family, I'm sure, has owned this for 60 years maybe. It's, I mean, there's been, there's been many public hearings that went through a definitive subdivision plan process, so we, they're going to be in the confines of the regulations, but I guess this board has something presented to it that actually fits the requirements of the zone. So how could we, I mean, you're going to have to overcome the detriment and pretty much prove that it's going to be detrimental.
I speak for a second.
Yeah, sure, name and address, please.
Mark Smith, I live in Sutton. But we have to overcome. What about all the other people that are impacted? Are we ignoring them?
They've been notified. They've been notified.
From Oxford and Webster people have been notified.
This is my understanding, that they have been notified.
Are you also aware, in the late 60s, there was a massive pipeline leak that blew gasoline all over that area?
Yep.
Contaminated the land?
Know all about it.
That, you know, that Mobile Oil came up and they eventually put, contaminated all the wells on Joe Jenny Road. They had to come up and run a water line from Sutton Ave. and Oxford all the way up there to protect the wells for the people. There are test borings that Mobile Oil has on our land south of that pipeline, which you can see on that map, which is close to that border. Has anybody taken a look at what the implications are for digging in that, whether we're going to move the contamination, whether the soil is in fact contaminated with benzene now, or Mobile Oil is monitoring those sites? I don't think that should be something that necessarily should be ignored.
And to the chair, that pipeline is no longer in use, it's been down and done and over.
That's true.
Capped off.
The ground is contaminated. It will be contaminated.
So I've never in all the years on this board have ever seen a report or anything like that. I know about what happened up there. Somebody went and drilled the pipe.
If the applicant can see if there's anything on their property concerning that, that would be...
It should be, environment, if it is.
We could test our wells. That we drilled.
Yeah.
I think 40 to 50 feet.
So just for the record, there are butter notifications, certified abutters, that were notified in Oxford and Webster. So we do have those lists.
How many of those were there?
So it was 300 feet, and we've got...
300 feet?
From the project, that's required.
Statute.
That's the statute.
So the noise is not going to travel more than 300 feet?
That's the abutter notification statute.
So regardless of how far the noise goes, 300 feet covers this project?
That's a whole separate issue. The noise is a separate issue that's regulated by something else. So notification to abutters, you had asked, you said, oh, those people, we're going to ignore them. We are not. So abutters have been notified within 300 feet in both Webster and Oxford.
Is that a matter of record in the file?
Yes. All right, in my hand.
If, may I add something?
Yes.
So I concur, I mean, I understand the noise issues. I mean, we live, we have property that is probably a half a mile from a gun club, and it sounds like Afghanistan and Beirut, okay? Sometimes you just cannot hear yourself think, but they're there. It is there, and it's just something, but at nighttime, pretty good, you know? We've got hunters all around the area doing their thing, and it looks like you have a lot of land, which is very fortunate, that you keep that in good, good stay for the wildlife. And I just think that there's a way to, you know, you're going to be fortunate to have what you have, and I just, the noise is the problem, but they're going to close at a certain time. And then you're going to have peace and quiet at night and early mornings, 5:00 AM when the light's up in the summer, and I just hope it can all work, but I'm just saying that we hear you.
I respect what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I can respect your zoning issue, but one of the things that this board is responsible for is to use good practical common sense when it comes to development. Development, good development in the right location is great. That's a key role that you folks play here. Putting development beside someone's houses is not. And I respectfully ask that you give us some serious discussion. If you lived in any one of those houses, you going to sign up for it? Probably not.
They were notified that this was happening, and they've had an industrial use, and they purchased their home next to an industrially zoned property.
Respectfully, you're saying it's okay?
No, I'm not saying it's okay. I'm saying when I'm looking at the regulations, it's unallowed use.
If I can, through the board, and just so everybody knows, that road is used all the time by trucks, tractor-trailers. It's a shortcut. They take it to go from Sutton Ave., all the way over Route 16. So is it going to add two or three trucks, 10 trucks, it might, but if the development happens on the other side of the road, the trucks still use that road no matter what. I drive by that road all day long, and you see trucks turning up and down that road all day long. So the road is used constantly right now for truck traffic.
No, they take 390.
I'm sorry, sir. Sorry, sir, if you wanted to say something, what was it?
No, I was just saying...
If you want to name an address, I'll let you have the comment if you want to. No? Okay.
Mrs. Chairwoman, the only thing that I want to raise is that this applicant has come to the board to request a special permit. It's saying that we recognize that this is an industrial zone, but they're also asking for it to be open air, and what's allowed by right in an industrial zone is an enclosed. So it is an expansion of what, and it is within the board's purview to grant or decline special permits.
Yes, understood. Thank you.
Could I ask?
Yeah.
The property that the Smith family has in question around this, is that industrial zoned?
Yes.
Some of it.
And where's the...
Most of it. We can't say we specified which specific lot.
Could, is there a way we could, like, that, about that distance, like specifically kind of like show exactly what the industrial is?
We did earlier, it's the whole town.
It seemed like it was the whole town. I don't know if it...
Yeah, it's a... Probably the way it was done back then.
Right. It seemed like it was like the state park too, which, I just didn't know if it loaded right.
Oh.
No, the layer's not populating right now. I think I overworked the...
So we have the map, right?
Yeah. So we're talking here.
And all that gray is industrial?
Yes. All that gray.
Could you zoom in a little, please?
So the pond...
So all of it?
So the pond is in the industrial?
Yeah, it's all industrial.
And, Madam Chairwoman, and I'd like to point out, some of the state forests is also in the industrial zone.
Owned by the...
Owned by the maps and pieces.
Of the state, yes.
If you, if you zoom out.
Owned by the state?
Mm-hmm.
Where? Oh, okay. Okay. That might be an error.
May I ask a question through you, to the attorney?
Yeah, sure.
Is any of the land owned by Smith protected under a conservation restriction or in perpetuity?
Not at, not at this time. The families use it for their own consumption.
And where is their entrance? Where is the entrance where you would access the properties?
Mr. Smith?
North or south?
Where we enter?
Yes. North or south of the project?
Joe Jenny Road right here is where we enter.
That little trail right there?
Yeah, that's actually the pipeline.
The old pipeline.
Oh, okay.
And we come down the pipeline, and you can see...
So through the chair...
Is that your property?
Yes.
Okay.
So you don't actually have any road going into your property?
And we have another cop road up here that goes into the property, yes.
If I can through the chair.
And we have roads from northwest main that goes into...
What they're using is the pipeline property to access their road.
The easement.
And that still exists? It's in play, the easement is still...
Correct.
Yeah.
Right away, why not use it?
Yeah. And how far away is the access or the closest point to the pipeline? Mr. Benoit, if you could give me a...
That is my pipeline here.
No, the other way, from the project's border to the closest point.
That's the edge of project?
Yeah.
Here, it's the edge of project here.
Right there.
Yep, right there.
To the access point?
Right. Yeah, that's the road down to the...
300?
Almost 800 feet?
Mm-hmm.
That's a dog.
The other land below the proposed project is owned by the 200 sports and sports law. So it's all natural woods used for hunting and things like that. It's like a park. And to put a quarry in a park is just...
If I can maybe make a homework assignment for the applicant?
Sure.
You have your facility now off of Lackey Dam Road, Gilboa Street. There is residences on Lackey Dam Road in Oxford, there's residences on Gilboa Street in Douglas. Could you maybe get some distances from your facility now to those houses versus what this could be? And maybe the town might know if we've had any complaints of issues of sound from the residential areas. Could be a good comparison. I would like to see a sound report. I drive through these facilities for work. I understand the abutters' concern. This isn't like rocket launches that go on here. It's not as loud as it's being, you know, argued. When I go through my dump truck, it's usually quieter in the facility than it is on the drop site, on the roads. So, but I would respectfully like a sound report.
Yeah, we should have our noise studied shortly, and we would be happy to...
And if I can, through the chair, if there was any complaints in Pine's pit through the years, it would have come in front of this board because they have permits. I can't recall in all the years I've been on this board of ever getting a complaint on that aspect of it. But I don't know the distances either.
And then, you know, when you come up with those measurements, if you're using the same equipment, if you're going to double the size of the, propose a double, you know, just...
Yeah, we can fill in the blank.
Yeah. I think that would help.
Through the chair?
Yes.
How, how many trucks do you anticipate will be coming in and out of there on a daily basis?
We could do that. It'll be much less than a Pine Stand because it's such a reduced operation, so we could project.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
When we say reduced operation, that's because the concrete company's not coming with you.
The concrete's not coming with us. It's just the size of the property. We use 70 acres now. That's 20, 24.
And if I can, through the chair too, when we went through everything with BOPRA, that was a quite lengthy ordeal. I think we went through a couple of months before we let that all go through. I never recall hearing anything from any abutters whatsoever concerning that project when we when we did all Bopreys work. And that was for a scrap yard.
He also has the permit for gra, glass recycling.
Correct, yeah, I remember that project.
They don't do any crushing at that facility, do they?
Yeah, yeah, that's why it's all under one roof.
Yeah.
And that's an open-sided building. There's no walls on it, it's open. They did it to keep the runoff down.
Yeah, that came through before my time, the Bopreys, so.
Okay. Board, anything else? Is anyone else in the audience? Comments, concerns? So I think we'll wait to hear back from Graves.
Yes.
Anyone on the line? On you, just us? Do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, just, I'm very new to this whole procedure, probably a good thing. Could you explain, what is the next steps? What's the process we're going to go through now? What's the next step, actions, those kinds of things? So we have a good sense of what's going to take first or not take first?
We are going to continue the public hearing tonight, and we, for the peer review to respond back to the application. So our next meeting is October 12th. And so we're going to discuss and review the peer review comments at that meeting.
And also look for comments from Webster, the town of Webster, Oxford.
Webster and Oxford. Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 93 Cliff Street to October 12th at 7:00 PM.
No.
Is it over yet? Mr. Preston?
It's before.
Made the motion? Mr. Zwicker?
I'll second.
Made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Okay, and 2024 meeting schedule. Can we move it to Tuesday?
Through the chair. Also, why are we having two meetings in June?
We're not.
We're not. It's only on here, so we can decide.
I would request that we move our meeting day back to where it was the first 12 years.
Yeah. We always used to have it on Tuesday.
I'm okay with that.
That was Tuesday nights. Does that hurt anybody?
We just have to be the off weeks from the board's selectmen.
Right.
And Finance Committee is on those currently.
Yeah, so we have to grab our room back. We have to grab our night back.
I'm for that. I was so used to Tuesday nights.
Yeah, because I.
Not Thursday, Tuesday.
Be wonderful for me, too.
Okay, so if I could have a formal motion to request.
So moved. May have it on Tuesday.
Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Sokrath. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much, Board.
Oh, I should have stayed because I could care less. Whatever day it is, my.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'll take.
Weekend starts on Thursdays.
Yeah, we've always had it. I don't know, it's always been on Tuesday night.
Hey, Thursday, thirsty Thursday.
Until recent years.
COVID. COVID changed it.
Yeah.
We were fine till COVID, and what happened was, we couldn't have two meetings at the same time.
Tell you what, though.
They made us move.
Much preferred to just be in this room. That room is so tight.
We don't have to go back.
So we can't.
No, we do every other weekend.
We're going to have nine members.
And then.
We used to do it in there, though. We packed that room.
So let's just generally look.
We would have to pick things off of this.
Can they just propose a new one?